Good evening. Welcome to the Agoura Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written public comment, please complete a comment card for each agenda item and submit it to the city clerk before the public comment portion of that item. I will now call this meeting to order, and I will defer to Commissioner Sharon for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I will now defer to our city clerk for the roll call vote.
Good evening. Commissioner Platzer?
Present.
Commissioner Sharon?
Present.
Commissioner Stein?
Present.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Present.
Chair Roth?
Present.
Chair Roth, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. We will move right along to the approval of tonight's agenda. Will the makers of the motion and the second to approve the agenda please state your names?
Commissioner Sharon makes a motion to approve the agenda.
Vice Chair seconds. Vice Chair Reinhardt, seconds.
Great, thank you very much, and I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, five to zero.
Great, thank you very much. We will now move to the public comments section of our agenda tonight. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please do not approach the die. Hand your item to the city clerk to distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and the speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to our city clerk. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Great, thank you very much. I will move to the consent calendar section of tonight's agenda. This section is reserved. Persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar, I will now defer to our city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Great. Since there are no speakers, I believe we move to a roll call vote to approve tonight's consent calendar. Is that correct? Great, I'll now defer to our city clerk. Oh, sorry, yes, will the maker of the motion and the second please state your names for the approval of tonight's consent calendar item?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Great, and I'll now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer, if you could just please say that you were seconding?
Oh, I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, five to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution recommending the city council adopt an accessory dwelling unit, also known as an ADU ordinance. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our associate city planner Katrina Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Roth, and good evening, planning commissioners. As mentioned, today's item is for an ADU ordinance amendment. So tonight I'll cover some of the history of the ADU ordinance and the purpose of those amendments, a short summary of what will be changing, then I'll go into a little more detail about the proposed amendments to the ADU ordinance, then staff's recommendation. So the city's current ADU ordinance was adopted in August 2021. After its adoption, the Housing and Community Development Department reviewed the ordinance and provided feedback to the city in 2023 and most recently in 2025. Since numerous laws were passed by the state since the city's adoption in 2021, the city's ordinance has since become inconsistent with state law. Some of the changes the state made related to height, setbacks, owner occupancy, covenants, and restrictions, and the number of units on multifamily lots. Most recently, the state just passed SB 543, which included amendments to the existing state laws on ADUs and JADUs, which I'll detail later on in the presentation. The proposed amendments would include a full repeal and replacement of the existing ADU ordinance, given the extensive formatting changes that distinguishes the application process, state-exempt ADUs and non-exempt ADUs. One reason for the change is to ensure that staff interprets and applies a code consistently with state law, while also making the ordinance more accessible and readable to the public. To stay consistent with state law, staff also proposes to amend definitions as it applies to the overall zoning ordinance. And to ensure our short-term rental prohibitions still apply, staff proposes to make minor changes to that section as well. Part of the proposed ordinance makes a distinction between state-protected ADU and all other ADUs. The proposed ordinance doesn't detail the specific parameters of what constitutes a protected or state-exempt ADU, but Attachment 2 of the staff report summarizes the development standards. So essentially, protected ADUs include detached units up to 800 square feet with four-foot side and rear yard setbacks on a single-family lot. The other is a conversion of existing space in a single-family dwelling, which can be a JADU if it's 500 square feet or less, and has its own kitchen and bathroom either in the unit or in the main residence. But if the converted space is more than 500 square feet, then it would be considered an ADU, which would still be state-exempt, but would have to maintain access exclusive from the main residence, which means the unit would need its own bathroom, unlike the JADU. And I also wanted to clarify a typo on Number 2 of Attachment 2, which says 1ADU or JDU can be conversions. It's actually meant to say 1ADU and JADU, which means applicants would be allowed to do both an ADU and a JADU conversion in one single-family dwelling. Existing accessory structures can also be converted up to its existing size. This also includes accessory structures that are fully demolished and reconstructed into an ADU with the same dimensions and location. Three, conversions of non-livable space, such as attics or storage rooms, within multifamily dwellings can be converted up to 25% of the existing number of standard units. And four, detached ADUs on existing multifamily lots can be up to eight units but can't exceed the number of existing units. And if there's a proposed multifamily, they're allowed up to two ADUs. If any of the proposed ADUs fall within these state-protected thresholds, then the city would not be able to regulate lot coverage, setbacks, equestrian, and architecture. That said, those units that exceed state thresholds, including detached ADUs that exceed 800 square feet, can be further regulated by the city. And this includes 10-foot separation between the main residence and the ADU if it's detached. The city can ask for architectural compatibility with the existing structure, including building materials, colors, and finishes. And when it comes to setbacks from property lines, we can only request that the front yard setbacks comply with the standard zoning requirements. And the side and rear yard setbacks are set by the state at four feet side and four feet on the rear. We can also require that the ADU comply with the zoning district's lot and site coverage requirements. Height requirements by the state would apply to both exempt and state-exempt ADUs. For detached ADUs, both on single-family dwelling lots and multifamily dwelling lots, the standard height is 16 feet. But ADUs on single-family dwelling lots can go up to 18 feet to accommodate the roof pitch so that it matches the pitch of the primary dwelling. For multifamily lots, detached ADUs can go up to 18 feet if the primary residence is multi-story or essentially more than one level. And attached ADUs can go up to 25 feet. Another change to state law is a restriction on the city's ability to require deed restrictions on ADUs. Originally, the city required covenants on all ADUs, 800 square feet or less, and JADUs. This is now amended to only apply to JADUs. The deed restrictions would include no rentals less than 30 days, no separate sale of the unit from the primary, and a requirement for the owner to occupy either the JADU or the main residence. Part of the ordinance amendment includes removal of the director's ability to do a fire safety review. HCD found this to be inconsistent with state law. However, since all new ADUs are subject to a building permit, the safety aspect will continue to be evaluated. One of the most recent changes to state law was the adoption of SB 543 just this past week. The staff report was written before the bill passed, so it was still tentative at that time. But now that it's passed, the way we calculate floor area for all ADUs and JDUs would be the interior livable space, as opposed to the gross floor area, which includes all spaces between the exterior walls. This means that the physical size of the structure could be larger than the actual ADU. To ensure the rest of the zoning ordinance aligns with the ADU regulations and state law, the definition for accessory dwelling unit would be amended to clarify that these types of units are permitted on proposed or existing lots with either a multifamily or single-family dwelling. The definition for a junior accessory dwelling unit is being amended to clarify that a JADU must be within the existing single-family residence or the attached garage, with a size limit of no more than 500 square feet of interior livable space. Lastly, the amendment includes a change to the short-term rental prohibitions. It currently restricts short-term rental units if the property has a recorded covenant or deed restriction. But since the state only allows the city to enforce deed restrictions on JADUs, the short-term rental prohibition, as currently written, would not apply to the other state-exempt ADUs. So to ensure the city can still enforce a minimum rental term of 30 days for all ADUs, both deed-restricted JADUs and non-deed-restricted ADUs, we would propose to modify the language to account for units that have general limitations imposed by any law, whether it's state, local, or federal. And with that, staff respectfully recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve a zoning ordinance amendment to Article 9 of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code to repeal and replace the accessory dwelling unit regulations in Section 9283, amend related definitions in Section 9120 consistent with state law, and amend Section 61005 to clarify short-term rental prohibitions and make a determination of exemption under SEQA. And this concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Katrina. As always, a great presentation. Do any commissioners have questions of staff? I'm going to look to my left tonight. Commissioner Stein, Commissioner Platzer?
I have several questions. Who is the Community Development Department?
That's Planning, Building and Safety and Code Enforcement.
Okay, within the city, right?
That's correct.
Okay. What is considered a multifamily lot? Is that like townhouses, condominiums, apartments?
All of the above. So anything that's more than a single-family residence.
Okay. And I'm a little confused about multifamily units. They say no more than two ADUs, but you can have eight ADUs. What does that mean?
So if there is an existing multifamily residence, they can build up to eight detached ADUs. If they are proposing a new multifamily residence, which means it doesn't exist yet, they can propose only up to two ADUs.
Okay. And how do you ensure rent, if it's less than 30 days? How do you monitor that?
So we have a short-term rental platform where people have to apply online, and it also scans all of the different online platforms like Verbo, Airbnb, and so we can actually tell when somebody lists their unit for short-term rentals, and we actually ensure that they obtain a permit. Otherwise, they're in violation of our code.
So what if they do it under the table?
There would be no way for us to know, but generally speaking, if you want a lot of people to be renting out your unit, a lot of times that would have to be done via an online platform.
Okay, and I also read that with, I live in Otagora, they said under 10,800 square feet that you don't have to allow horses, I mean, the horse property, under 10,800 square feet.
So to the extent that the horsekeeping area would physically preclude the ADU, we can't enforce the horsekeeping area. So essentially, if you have a 1,500-square-foot equestrian area and there's nowhere else to put the ADU on the property, we would be compelled to allow the ADU on that equestrian area. But in all other circumstances, the equestrian area would be protected.
Yeah, but it said that 10,800 square feet, then you don't even need to consider that.
That's existing in the code, so we currently actually have that ability to exempt that square footage.
Okay, I have more questions, but later. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Thank you.
Reinhardt?
Thank you. And Katrina and staff, thank you for your excellent presentation. A couple of things. Having our hands tied locally even further is extremely frustrating, and hearing that, you know, there was yet another law passed this week. With the new law that was just passed, are there things that you anticipate that we'll have to amend in this amendment?
I believe we tried to cover most of what SB 543 changed in the existing state law. Mainly, what would have really impacted our ADU ordinance was the calculation of the floor area, and so we incorporated that in anticipation of its passing, which it did. So we would then be calculating the interior floor area as opposed to the gross floor area now.
So help me understand the differentiation between that a little bit, because if I'm thinking of the external floor area, right, that might include like, you know, porches or a patio or some sort of external space? Or if there was some sort of storage or like soffit space between the interior and exterior wall of the freestanding unit? Is that the differentiation?
Somewhat. So gross floor area essentially accounts for all the space in between the exterior walls, and that includes the depth of the walls as well. Interior livable space would only account for spaces that you can either sleep, eat, and essentially function and live there. So if there is a storage room that is not habitable, that wouldn't count towards it. If you have a mechanical room, it wouldn't count towards livable space. Essentially, your bedroom, your kitchen, your living room, your dining room would count towards the interior livable space.
And that calculation is the determination between junior ADU and regular size as far as what sort of local control we have?
So the calculation would apply to both JADUs and regular ADUs, but JADUs are already within the existing interior residence, so you wouldn't even be counting from the exterior of those walls.
Okay. And I had a question for Robbie about the monitoring for short-term rentals. So as I understand it, the software crawls the web and enforces any restrictions that the city puts on as far as short-term rentals goes. Does that also include exchange programs? So, you know, like I know there's like house swapping with, you know, where you can pay an additional fee, or if there are other, you know, kind of gray area or gray market short-term rentals? And what sort of reporting do you receive on that? And how often?
Yeah, so we receive a list. I can't remember if it's once or twice a week, but it basically scrubs up to 100 different short-term rental platforms online. Like I said, Verbo and Airbnb are the two main ones. But we monitor hundreds of those platforms, and so basically, it's any platform that allows rentals of property under 30 days, because as soon as you hit that 30-day threshold, you're now a tenant. And so under that threshold is called a short-term rental. And so it monitors that, and to ensure that ADUs are compliant, we catch everybody who's operating a short-term rental, and we require them to submit a permit, and we can see on their permit submittals whether or not it includes an ADU or not. And so that's how we would essentially regulate the ADUs not being used as a short-term rental, because we want to issue the permit for it.
Right, so as I understand it, we, the city, are actively enforcing no short-term rentals on ADUs or JADUs at this time?
That's correct. I think there's a nuance, and that's the reason why we updated the ordinance. Our current code for short-term rentals has language pertaining to properties with restrictive covenants. And we used to require restrictive covenants on almost all ADUs, which is why that language used to make sense.
Right.
But since we no longer have the ability to require restrictive covenants, now we had to change the language in the short-term rental ordinance to just say all ADUs rather than using that restrictive covenant language. So that's why the language changed.
Okay. Thank you, it was very helpful. I will reserve any future questions until after my fellow commissioners have spoken.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Sharon, do you have any questions?
Hi, yes. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question about, you brought up owner occupied, but I didn't see any changes in the draft ordinance regarding owner occupation, and so I just wanted to make sure, like, how you were addressing it. Is there a change regarding owner occupying?
Yes, so before, I believe the deed-restricted covenant would have required anyone who has a covenant with an ADU less than 800 square feet and a JADU to either occupy the main residence or the ADU/JADU. But since we're only allowed to But since we're only allowed to enforce the covenant on JADUs, the requirement for owner occupancy would therefore apply only to JADUs.
Okay. So is this, is this part new? Should it be addressed or has it always been part of it?
That's, that's just reflective of state law.
Okay.
So it's, we're essentially adopting the, the new regulations under, under state law.
Okay.
For, for the record, Robbie, would you mind stating what was just pointed out?
Yes. So we're looking at the owner occupancy requirement for JADUs. So there's separate sections in the state government code that regulate ADUs versus JADUs. They're different code sections and that requirement lives in the code section for JADUs and we cannot require that owner occupancy for regular ADUs. So that's, that's why our ordinance reflects that way.
Okay.
Great. And for the record, that's the draft ordinance that was being referred to.
Yeah. I, I'm pointing to section nine two eight, three point two, section E. So I was just getting some clarity on that section. Other than that, I think I'm good. I, I'm, I got it.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Stein.
I just have a few questions. This has come up in my community, Morrison Ranch Homeowners Association views. People have bought lots and they felt that, oh, now you're letting your trees grow tall or you're building now additional dwelling unit in the back with a four foot setback. I mean, how are we going to address now a homeowner learning, somebody's building a home and it's really now four feet against the rear of, you know, the property is, there's no restriction on that. We just have to, just tell the homeowner, your views are being impacted and this is how we are dealing with it now?
Yeah. So just like you explained, the, the function of the covenant used to be to notify future owners of their requirements under the ADU section of the code. Since the state's no longer allowing us to require those restrictive covenants, it's going to be on the new property owner to read the regulations before they buy the property because they're, they're subject to the regulations regardless. It's just that, that covenant that notified them of the specific regulations no longer exists.
And just curious, do we have a count right now of how many homes or homeowners have added an additional dwelling unit or a junior dwelling unit? And potentially what we think the amount of new ADUs, JADUs will be built because of these new laws that we're having to pass?
So this is just an estimate. There's at least 100, less than 150, but at least 100 units that have been processed or that are in process. As far as anticipation of more ADUs in the future with these changes, I don't think there would be any significant changes because we've already been essentially applying state law as currently written, even though our ADU ordinance says otherwise.
And just to add on to that too, our housing element estimates roughly 10 ADUs per year. This housing cycle, we have seen an uptick in ADUs and I think we're slightly exceeding that projection. So it's anywhere, we've been receiving anywhere from 10 to 15 per, per year, roughly.
And if I understand, the state exempt, we do not charge certain fees anymore. So it's no longer revenue to the city.
We're allowed to charge fees that recoup our costs for issuing the permit, but that's it.
Thank you.
I see Vice Chair Reinhardt, I think, gunning for a microphone.
That's a little, a little strong, but so just to, I guess, make sure, you know, that we're, we're absolutely clear here. Our hands are tied on a lot of, on a lot of these elements. You know, I mean, one of the things that concerned me greatly, seeing the changes that we have to make based on, on the state legislation that was passed that supersedes our, our local control are the setbacks, the owner occupation, you know, owner occupied, you know, restrictions. Because now I'm worried that, you know, corporations are going to come in and buy tracts of land and put in as many, you know, ADUs as possible in order to turn this into, you know, Potterville as far as, you know, a, a rent, you know, putting too many units that aren't sustainable for the, the particular area. So is there any kind of recourse as far as, you know, when it comes to utility, fire safety and anything based on, on these new legislation? Is there anything that we can do to make sure that we're protecting, you know, rights of way and, you know, and anything else? I mean, it's disturbing to hear all of the different things that are, that are currently being taken away. So talk, talk us through, I know, I know that as, as city staff, you're trying to protect what little control we have, but can you really go through some of the guardrails that this new, you know, revised version would protect?
Yes. So as you saw in the presentation, we've been going kind of back and forth with the State Department of Housing and Community Development since 2023. And we've kind of pushed back on a lot of different things that they've raised issue with, which is, you know, obviously that's, that's why we're revising the ordinance right now is to comply with state law at the request of, of HCD. I'll just say that we have within our ADU ordinance currently and proposed, I think, the extent of what we can allow under an ADU ordinance. And that's specifically for any ADUs that don't meet the state exempt criteria. As soon as you're in the state exempt criteria, the state government code, which supersedes local, local ordinances, it says that local agencies shall issue a building permit. And so it doesn't really give us a whole lot of flexibility with those special classes of ADUs. So that's why we build as much as we can into local control for those that are kind of above that state exempt threshold. But there, the government code still regulates what we can and can't do with even those. So to the extent that we can do it with requiring architectural compliance and setbacks for ADUs in the high fire zone, we're, we're doing that.
Okay. So, so there are still, I guess, aesthetic guidelines, even if there aren't necessarily structural, you know, we, we can't stop the building of the structure or where it is on the property, even if there had been previous regulations on that. But we can still offer strong guidance and, you know, like keep people from painting it neon orange, I guess?
That's correct. So we, we do our best as staff when people come in to apply for a permit, to kind of walk them through what, what the city likes, what the city doesn't like. But in terms of our actual regulations, there's limits to what we can codify. And so I'll say that most people just want to do, they, they do want to make their ADUs look, look nice.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. So, so we haven't run into too many instances where people really want to tiptoe the line of what's going to be kind of out of touch with, with their community, luckily. So I guess that's what I'll say.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate the, the thoroughness of staff's reporting and answering questions, especially, you know, as we try to understand what, what we can still, you know, steward as far as making sure that our, our community reflects the, the values that it was founded on. Thank you.
Great. Do any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Plaizer?
What is the maximum size of an ADU? How many square feet?
1,000 square feet.
So they cannot build a 2,000 square foot ADU?
Not as a new construction, but if there was an existing accessory structure that was over 1,000 square feet, they'd be able to convert that entire structure.
Hmm. And what, the occupancy rates concern me. I mean, if you have a studio and a one bedroom, I mean, 10 people could live in a studio.
Correct.
How many, how many, what is the occupancy rules?
So there, with respect to occupancy, the building code actually does establish an occupancy limit. So the number of people per square foot is sort of limited by the building code. And I don't know the specific number. I don't know, Robbie, if you do, but it's, you're not going to see 10 people in a 400 square foot ADU.
Well.
That would violate the, the building code. So we could then enforce the building code in that way.
But they couldn't, you know, there are people that work at night and work during the day and there could be a lot of occupants in, in a, in an area that you may not know.
Yeah. Ultimately, there's no real way for us to proactively enforce that. So it would have to come through a complaint and we would do an investigation and make sure that it meets all codes and requirements and potentially county health requirements as, as well.
Thank you.
Great. Any further questions from my fellow commissioners? This is Chair Roth and just for the good of the order, I want to introduce our acting city attorney tonight, Diana Barrett. Did I get it right? Who, who just spoke? I know we're a little loose on our, our titling guidelines tonight. So the question I have for staff, Katrina, thanks for your presentation tonight, also thanks for speaking with me yesterday about this item. One of the questions I have is just understanding kind of the impact to city staff. Obviously, city staff have been operating under state guidelines without the, without the ordinance being reflective of the state guidelines. I'm hearing my fellow commissioners very loud and clear about their concerns about what the state has said we must do. So I just want to have a better understanding of how the change in the ordinance tonight will, you know, potentially improve or not improve kind of city staff as they operate and, you know, pass permits through, you know, through, for potential JADUs and ADUs.
So one of the reasons why we actually decided to reformat the ordinance is because the way it's currently organized, it's a little convoluted and it's hard to tell what is a state exempt ADU and what is a non-state exempt ADU. So far, we haven't had much issue, but for newcomers, it's, it may be a little difficult to understand. So we're hoping that this proposed ADU streamlines and makes it more readable to the user, both the staff member and the public. But the way we've been applying the code, you know, we've had to interpret, interpret the state code, which is confusing in itself. So we're just trying to make it more digestible through our ADU ordinance.
Great. Appreciate that. So, so in essence, this would be a help to city staff who are navigating kind of two distinctly different guidelines for ADUs.
Correct. And, and we propose to eventually create an internal document that makes it easier for staff to, you know, know what is a state exempt ADU and non, non exempt ADU. And that will consistently change as state law changes as well.
Great. Appreciate the presentation. Before we move on, are there any other questions for staff? Great. Hearing none. I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. The speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker.
Thank you. We did not receive any public comments, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing, do any commissioners have any further questions of staff? Seeing or hearing none, I'll move on. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing. We will move on to deliberations. I will start to my right this time with Commissioner Sharon.
I, I'm very clear that what we're attempting to do is preserve our city. And I'm really, you know, it's disappointing to see a lot of our own choices be removed from our, our, you know, our free will, basically. And so, yeah, I, you know, I commend you guys in interpreting state law. It sounds tedious and difficult and condensing it for us in like manageable bites. It, it is just, you know, disappointing to see that, you know, the whole state being treated the same because we're so unique. And, and so, you know, I appreciate the, the effort that went into updating this ordinance. I see exactly why we needed to update it and it makes sense. It's just, you know, disappointing to see us have to do it.
And before we move on, Commissioner Sharon, I just want to make sure that that means you either make or you cannot make tonight's findings.
I can make tonight's findings.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's just be mindful of that as we continue. Commissioner Stein, would you like to go?
You know, it is at a point where, you know, you just keep looking at how the state keeps making rules and telling the cities how to, how to manage its, you know, real estate. You know, but the alternative is that we be non-compliant with state and then there'd be all kinds of other havoc. And, you know, you know, I just, you know, would prefer, as other people have stated and other commissioners, that we would have a lot more control on this. But, you know, that there's nothing we can do. We have to abide by state law. And I've read through everything. I'm, I'm a little disappointed in side yard rears and setbacks. I'm, you know, concerned about traffic, occupancy, things like that, but sadly, I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Plaizer?
I understand what we have to do. It is very disconcerting. I've lived in the city for, since prior to cityhood and our, our hands are probably tied. I'm worried about traffic. I'm worried about fire. I'm worried about the occupancy rate and change to our city. And I, I guess I can make the findings, but I'm not happy about it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Plaizer. Vice Chair Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair Roth. Echoing the, the sentiments of my fellow commissioners, you know, it's, it's, it's very disheartening, you know, to, to have our, our local control taken away and, and our hands tied. And I commend the city staff for trying to make this as useful, you know, a resolution as possible and, and to, you know, demystify the process for not only staff, but for the citizens and, you know, our constituents. One, you know, I'd like to, again, echo concerns about fire safety and other things. And I will give, I guess, a word of caution to anyone, you know, who, who is looking at a house. If a realtor promises you a view, don't believe them because it's, nothing is guaranteed in this world. So, you know, the other thing I would encourage is if you are displeased with, you know, local control being tied, please go to your state government, your state representatives and state senators and express your displeasure in how this has been handled. I think that all of us have tried to act in good faith, both as, you know, citizens who want to make sure that California is affordable for everyone and also that, you know, our cities are livable and safe for everyone who lives there. So this is, you know, a very difficult time, I guess, for us because, you know, the city of Agoura Hills is a, a very unique place and, and again, has tried to operate in good faith with, with, you know, state, local, you know, partnership. So with reluctance, I too can make all the findings.
Thank you very much. I'll keep my commentary just slightly different. I echo all the major concerns that my fellow commissioners have said. My approach to this, though, is a little bit more nuanced in the, in the fact that obviously, when you take two different guidelines and you're asking already stretched thin staff to reconcile the differences between the two and operate a permitting program for ADUs and JADUs, I believe that kind of the disconnect between the two makes it, you know, cumbersome and, and, you know, can either clog up the permitting process for residents or city staff, which, you know, leads to other projects being left behind or, you know, put on the back burner and then frustrated constituents who do by right have the ability to have ADUs and have, have had that ability in the past regardless. So I think the reconciliation makes a lot of sense and I, you know, notwithstanding, I think, very obvious comments about concerns, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see that this is going in a direction that's going to alleviate staff time, which is ultimately going to provide better service for our constituents and, and residents. I can make the findings. I can make the findings, and, yeah, I really just want to thank staff for the deliberation here. I will also point out that this is the first stop for this ordinance, and we'll be going up to city council. There'll be further deliberation and public comment will hopefully be at that stage. But now I will, yeah, we'll move to adopt tonight's resolution. It sounds like we, we all agree that there's, that the findings can be met. We should adopt the resolution to be moved forward to the city, city council. So I will read the staff recommendation and just ask for a maker of a motion in a second. So tonight's resolution is to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Agoura Hills municipal code to consolidate all, oh, reading the wrong one. I'm going to backtrack. We're going to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Article 9 zoning of the Agoura Hills municipal code to repeal and replace the accessory dwelling unit regulations in Section 9283, amend related definitions in Section 9120, consistent with state law, and amend Section 61005 to clarify, to clarify short-term rental prohibitions and make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. I will now call for a motion in a second. And please state your names.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Vice Chair Reinhardt seconds.
Great. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is to conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution recommending the city council adopt a protected tree ordinance. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our city principal planner, Robbie Nessavich. Nessavich or Nessavick?
That's right.
Yeah, got it.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. So tonight, we're going to be talking about a protected tree ordinance, a draft ordinance that staff has prepared. Move on to the next slide. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the project background, the goals and objectives or the planning principles for the ordinance, all the proposed regulatory changes, and then staff's recommendation. So, an amendment of the oak tree ordinance is a city council goal for this fiscal year. The amendment was prompted by a few shortcomings of the current regulations pertaining to enforcement, its cost burden on single-family homeowners, permit timelines, and the desire to include additional tree species to our list of protected trees. Next slide. To ensure that staff implemented the vision of the city council, we proposed a set of goals and objectives for the ordinance called planning principles. The planning principles were brought to the LUEDC, or the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee, on June 10th and to the full city council on July 9th. The city council was supportive of the planning principles as presented, and they were included as an attachment to your report. The first planning principle aimed to ensure consistency throughout the ordinance and the consolidation of all protected tree regulations into Section 9657. Standards for individual types of tree permits have also been consolidated and will now be reviewed based on the type of activity. We would now have three different types of tree permits. The first would be general tree permits, which is work within the protected, the tree protection zone of a protected tree that is not routine maintenance and will not jeopardize the long-term health of the tree, or tree removals that are not associated with development or emergencies. The second type of tree permit are hazardous tree permits, which are situations in which a protected tree is considered hazardous and must be removed for safe, safety purposes. And the third type of permit are development tree permits, which are new construction projects that will impact or have the potential to impact potential, protected trees. And if you want to know what the submittal requirements and regulations are for a general tree permit, you'll now be able to look at a single code section to see all the applicable regulations for that permit type. This clarity will increase the likelihood of compliance and reduce back-and-forth interactions between staff and the applicant, streamlining the permit process. Next slide, please. The second planning principle aims to give more incentives to property owners to maintain protected trees, as stringent regulations sometimes serve as a deterrent for the planting of new protected trees. The ordinance tries to address this issue directly by adding a planting incentives section, which is 9657.8. Few incentives are provided directly in the ordinance. The first one's registered plantings, which is any owner that willingly plants a new protected tree species on their property now has the ability to register those trees with the city. And the registered plantings that are on file with the city will not be subject to the protections of the ordinance. New developments that are impacting trees and have a requirement to plant trees cannot register those, those required plantings. The second incentive is fee waivers for variances in modifications of zoning requirements when needed to avoid a protected tree. So just an example of this, let's say you have a commercial development that's coming in and they're, they're building a 9,000-square-foot commercial building, but there's a large oak tree in the middle of the property. So they have to move their building forward a few feet and encroach a little bit into the front setback. What we're proposing is they're still going to need a variance in order to infringe on that front setback, but since they're doing it in order to protect a tree, we're going to be waiving the fee for them to do that, essentially an incentive for them to protect the tree. The third incentive is that we've streamlined the processing procedures for general tree permits. And lastly, we created a certification program for tree care companies where we can essentially certify a tree care company. We'll have trainings either on a yearly or bi-yearly basis where we can essentially train tree, tree trimming companies in the city to abide by all of our regulations. And in return, they would get essentially free, free marketing. So they, we would have a list where, with all of our certified tree trimming companies that we would essentially be able to hand out at city hall and put on the website. Additionally, two things not directly addressed in the ordinance that staff aims to do shortly after the adoption of the ordinance is the establishment of a tree grant program and the offering of landmark tree plaques. These two items did not need to be located in the ordinance, which is why they're not directly addressed in the proposed legislation. We can essentially just do them. Next slide. Planning principle number three aimed to create more straightforward enforcement provisions. The update creates objective enforcement language and processes and maintains strict penalties for violators of the ordinance. Violators would still be subject to mitigation requirements, restitution in certain instances, and increased permit fees to cover code enforcement time spent. All fees and restitution amounts would be established separately via a city council Planning principle number four aimed to address the issue that many property owners have when mitigation replacements are required, which is that there is often not enough space to fit all the trees on their property. Particularly with the new fuel modification and tree spacing requirements at the county and on the state level, there needs to be an option for off-site replacement plantings. The ordinance allows a mitigation fund to be established, and we plan to adopt in lieu fees via a separate resolution so that the city can pay for tree replacements through our tree grant program or on city-owned property. Next slide. Planning principle number five aims to create clear, concise, and practical regulations while maintaining or increasing protections. To implement this principle, staff updated our method of analyzing impacts to protected trees. As explained in the staff report, the ordinance proposes to calculate removal impacts based on the diameter of trees removed rather than estimating the canopy and root zone impacts. Not only is this method more precise in terms of measuring exact impacts, but it also helps to incentivize the use of existing protected trees in a development, as the current regulations do punish property owners for any encroachment into the tree protection zone. And further, it incentivizes the retention of larger, more mature trees, as their removal would greatly impact the 10% removal limit. In contrast, scrub oaks are the only protected species that will actually be regulated using the square footage of removal, and this is because it's a shrub, and measuring impacts based on its trunk diameter would not be possible or practical. Planning principle number six aimed to protect additional species of protected trees. The city's arborists put together a list of native trees to consider based on the following factors: likelihood of impact from development, the frequency in our natural setting, their frequency in urban landscapes, the ecological area that they occur in, their water usage, potential size at maturity, and consistency with the city's climate action plan. And based on these factors, staff recommended that the city council consider adding the California sycamore and the Southern California black walnut to the list of protected trees, and the city council was supportive. So getting into some other regulatory changes, I'm going to briefly go over some of them that we haven't already discussed. The current regulations have a 20% removal threshold for canopy or root zone impacts before a property owner or developer has to mitigate for the tree. So that's, we're talking individual removal thresholds. The new regulations would allow a developer to encroach greater than 20% as long as those encroachments are minor in nature and would likely not impact the long-term health of the tree. In these instances, the owner would be required, be required to establish a monitoring program for up to five years to establish the long-term, to ensure the long-term health of the tree. The next new regulation proposed is scaling mitigation based on the diameter of trees removed and the size of trees removed. The current regulations do not differentiate between a two-inch tree removal and a 47-inch tree removal. Both would actually require the same amount of mitigation under the city's current code, which does not capture the tree's actual environmental value. Further, if a variance is approved for more tree removals, we are going to be requiring larger tree replacements and more tree, tree replacements depending on the proposed removal percentage. This will allow the city to require more mitigation for more impactful projects. Next slide. So currently, tree permit approvals vary based on the number of proposed removals. In practice, it is more logical to require an administrative permit for hazardous tree removals or general tree permits, as they typically only involve pruning or the removal of trees that are becoming hazardous or encroaching on existing infrastructure. Mitigation for general tree permits is remaining at 124-inch box tree removed, per tree removed, and this is because general tree permits would only be approved in instances where the tree is encroaching into existing infrastructure. We don't want to require excessive mitigation for these trees, as it may significantly burden single-family homeowners that have no choice but to remove the tree. Next, development tree permit approval authority will lie with the established decision-maker for the development permit itself. So in other words, if the development project is already required to go to the planning commission, the planning commission is going to be the approval authority for the, for that oak tree permit as well. Additionally, some exemptions were added to the ordinance. We already discussed registered plantings, but we are also increasing the protection threshold from two inches to six inches. This is because a two-inch tree really doesn't provide any sort of significant environmental value. Staff did a review of other city tree protection regulations and found that six inches is a good sweet spot for a tree that is starting to provide environmental value and is worth protecting. Next slide. Lastly, we have some special types of development permits that require administrative review, such as Senate Bill 9 projects and affordable housing projects. The existing regulations for those projects have been moved to Section 9657 and have been slightly adjusted to align with our new requirements. Next slide. This ordinance is exempt pursuant to SEQA guideline Section 15308, actions by regulatory agencies for protection of natural resources, because it is an action taken by a regulatory agency to ensure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, and protection of the environment. While the ordinance allows for a relaxation of processing procedures for general permits, it will not result in a relaxation of mitigation requirements, and it will not result in a relaxation of standards leading to environmental degradation. This ordinance protects two additional native tree species, and mitigation requirements for the removal of protected trees are generally increasing, particularly for removals of large trees and heritage trees that provide the most value to the environment. New incentives are also being provided to promote the enhancement and restoration of the city's native trees. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Agoura Hills municipal code to consolidate all protected tree regulations into Section 9657, and updating the city's protected tree regulations to streamline permit processing, prioritize the retention of individual trees, incentivize the planting of new protected trees, include the California sycamore and Southern California black walnut as protected trees, and make other amendments and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions, as is our arborist, Ryan Allen, over at DUC.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Thank you, Ryan, for being here with us tonight. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Sharon, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Robbie. It was great, great presentation, as always. So my question, I'll just go down my list. You did mention incentives and modifications regarding waiving fees and stuff like that, and you used the example of, of a developer. What about like single-family residents and, and, you know, mom and pops, not, not major developers?
Yeah, the same exemption would apply. It just, it applies, we use developer, and most cities use the term developer as just anybody who's taking an action to develop the property, whether it be a single-family home, a single-family addition, or a large commercial project. So it would be any, any project.
Okay. Thank you. And then I really actually like the idea of a general tree permit. I think you guys are really taking a lot of the, like, a lot of work out of like the, that the resident has to do if they just want to trim back their trees. When I'm looking down at the, the general tree permit steps, there are fees required. What are those fees, and, and how much are they for when a resident wants to, I'm assuming a general tree permit would be like prune their trees back?
Yeah. So a minor oak tree permit right now, I believe, is $250. And so, but we would establish a new resolution establishing new fees at the same time as this ordinance if we wanted to make any changes at that time.
Yeah. I think, I feel like, to me, it seems like, I feel like we wouldn't want to charge fees to residents who are abiding by our law and taking the, and taking the steps to get a permit and, and follow your, you know, application form, justification statement, photos of the tree, and like all the things that you guys are requiring. And, you know, then they also have to still pay for the pruning, like the tree trimming company. So I, I think that having fees on top of that is pretty onerous in terms of the process they're already going through. So I, you know, I'm, I'm interested to see what the rest of the commissioners think about that, if they have any thoughts on that at all, and perhaps maybe, you know, passing that concern on to the city council if this does pass. I guess the other, my next questions are, how do you guys find or prove violators when, like, in terms of the ordinance?
Typically through complaints. And ever, a lot of people in the city are very passionate about their oak trees, as you can imagine. So if anybody sees tree trimming happening on an oak tree, you probably believe we receive a lot of calls.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And then, sorry, just looking at my notes. I see in the limit, in the chart we were given, the removal limits for individual trees, the, I think this is, the proposed regulation says that if the encroachment exceeds 10%, the tree shall be required to be put on a monitoring program. program as a conditional, condition of approval, and mitigation, and mitigation is required if the tree dies as a result of the project impact. Do, just for context, how long would the mitigation, would, like, the monitoring program take, and like, how, like, if someone pruned back the trees, how long does it take for a tree to die or no, you know, like, what's a timeframe for a program like this?
Yes, it's typically one arborist report a year for five years. And just to be clear, that would be only for development permits, it wouldn't be for general permits. So, so if somebody submitted a development permit, and they're impacting existing trees, and let's say they even have a few replacement plantings that they have to do as part of their mitigation, those monitoring reports would require them to give, essentially give us status updates on both the replacement plantings and the impacted trees throughout the property, so that we can ensure that they remain healthy for five years, which is general and standard practice for tree mitigation monitoring, because after that point, you can pretty much ensure that all the development activity that happened, they would have, we would have seen a decline in health by then.
All right, thank you. In the general tree permit approval authority, I see that the proposed regulation is that the director review for all, the director reviews, review for all general tree permits are not subject to appeal. Can you just, does that mean that, that the resident has no opportunity to change the decision of that permit?
Correct. So basically, right now, having an appeal period is very cumbersome, and the reason for that is that if, if that decision of the director is subject to appeal, let's say there's, there's an existing 20-day appeal period for general tree permits, they can't actually do the work on the tree for that appeal period. So they would have to apply for the permit, achieve the permit, and then wait 20 days in order to actually do the tree pruning, because if a member of the public wanted to appeal the director's position on, on the oak tree permit, they could do so, and so we can't go ahead and allow them to do the action before that appeal period's done. So really, it's, it was part of the streamlining, the streamlining that we tried to do with the ordinance as it pertains to general tree permits.
Understood. So I, so the way I read it was that if it was, if the permit was not approved for the owner, the owner could not appeal the decision, but then I actually see now that you're saying if anyone appeals the, a permit that was actually approved. So, okay, so I, I get your perspective, and I also, I obviously understand my perspective. So I don't know if there's, like, any language improvement there that could be done, maybe between now and sending, if it goes to the, the city council, because clearly there was a confusion there.
Yeah, so basically, you either have appeal language or you don't. And so there really is no appeal language, but we'll clean, we'll clean it up in the staff report itself, for sure. But appeals go both ways, as you're describing, but for the most part, if somebody's applying for a permit and we're issuing a permit, we're essentially giving them what they're requesting, so it wouldn't really make sense for them to be appealing it. So it would only benefit the, the person that we're granting the permit to, usually.
Would there be any instances where somebody wanted to prune their, their trees, but you guys did decline the permit, where now, if there's no appeal process, they have no other options but to not do what they, they want to do on their property?
Yeah, essentially, the way it would work right now, let's just say we deny an oak tree permit, and then they can actually appeal the director's decision. They would have to appeal it, go to the planning commission, there's a fee for that appeal, so they would have to pay $4,000, let's just say, and go to the planning commission. They'd have a hearing at the planning commission, let's say the planning commission denies it. Then they would have to appeal the planning commission decision and go to the city council. And now, let's say the city council denies it. Now they would have, the only option would be through legal channels. So it just cuts out the planning commission and the city council steps before they would have to take the legal action.
Understood. Yeah, I don't know if I, I understand it from a greater sense of, like, if you approve my permit, nobody else can appeal it, but I also don't like that, like, authoritarian authority of, like, I've decided this about the permit, and you can't argue it unless you want to take it to court. So I have a little bit, I don't know, I'll wait to see what my fellow commissioners say about that as well. I think that's it for now, but, you know, keep me, I'm on deck, so in case I have anything else that comes up.
Nice baseball pun. Commissioner Stein, would you like to go?
Well, you know, reading through it all, trying to, you know, first of all, going through the staff, thank you for your presentation. A lot of it just seems to be very straightforward. To me, the, the one thing that I have to get my, wrap my head around is going from canopy to diameter, and then going from maybe two inch to six inch. My biggest concern is going to be if we got vacant property, can a developer find it easier to justify removing a whole bunch of small trees that fall under that and just pay a small penalty than having it where the canopy? So I'm just concerned that, is there going to be an opportunity for them to just say, oh, I'm going to just, I'm just going to remove all the trees?
Yeah, I think you have to keep in mind, too, that the canopy is also, it's also a ratio based on how big the tree is. So regardless, if you're removing a small tree right now, it's going to have a smaller canopy than the large tree. So while it might be the case that moving to DSH, technically speaking, might allow maybe one more removal if they're all small trees, it might allow less removals if you're trying to remove a large tree, which would provide the greater environmental value. So it just depends on, you know, which way you want to cut it and slice it.
Okay, and I would assume that, you know, if someone's coming along and saying, I think my tree is, become a hazard now, and I want to remove it, we would have our arborists come and look at it and say, we're just not going to take your word for it. We will be inspecting the tree and seeing it doesn't really pose a hazard to the community.
That's, that's right. So hazardous tree permits require us to review it and issue it, and there's a distinction between a hazardous tree permit and then emergency actions taken by regulatory agencies. So if the fire department wanted to go out and take out a tree, they could do that if they were actively in the course of fighting a fire. But if, if somebody's saying, oh, my tree's dead, I want to remove it, we would go out and inspect and verify whether it's dead, because a lot of times we go out and it's not actually dead, so.
And then, I'm still trying to figure out, you know, this whole zero-zone fire, and, you know, we're now told, you know, you've got to remove things five feet from your home. Now you have a tree with a large canopy. What are we supposed to do to help that homeowner really comply with what I consider now to be a new compliance issue that we're being told we need to do, but, you know, and obviously we want to make sure that we reduce potential fires, and I know that even we received somebody asking about active fire versus potential fire. So I'm kind of looking at it as, how do we address potential fires and also being able to allow somebody to, you know, do a zero-zone, you know, protection?
Yeah, so we're actually not the enforcement agency for that zero zone. So if, if the fire department wanted to come in and tell a property owner that they had to remove a tree that's within five feet of their home, that would come directly from them. So we, we wouldn't be the ones going out telling them that you have to do this. Now, they, after the fire department tells them that they have to do it, then they would come to us for a tree permit to, to do it. And that's where that hazardous tree permit language in there at least gives us some flexibility to where this, you know, this is being inflicted onto that property owner, and it's, they have no choice whether or not to remove the tree. So we don't really want to punish them for, for having to take it out. So that, that's where we provided some flexibility, and especially with the situation that's happening with homeowners losing their home insurance. We do want to have that flexibility language in there, and that's one of the things that the city council mentioned was important to have in, in the ordinance.
Thank you. I'll defer to other commissioners at this time.
Great. Commissioner Stein, thank you very much. Commissioner Placer?
Thank you for the presentation. I have several questions. What is an oak tree plaque?
It's a plaque celebrating the tree. So it can be, we haven't made any designs or anything yet, but it's just an idea that we could do in the future, basically celebrating and rewarding, rewarding property owners for maintaining those landmark trees.
Interesting. And so my tree service or gardener cannot take care of my oak tree if I have an oak tree. Is that correct?
No, they can. It's just we have a, we've now are incentivizing compliance, and we're incentivizing tree trimming companies to come get educated about the city's requirements. So they, they can still pull an oak tree permit or a protected tree permit with the city. It's just, we would essentially have to go out and inspect it, whereas if it was done by one of the certified tree trimmers, we would just make them give us pictures. So it's just a small, little distinction, but it's providing an incentive for, for tree trimmers that are educated on our process.
So what if they do it, and, and, what trouble do they get into?
Depends on what they did.
Well, let's say they trimmed the oak tree.
They would have to provide mitigation. If we found that they did it willfully, we could allow, we could require some restitution if they're, especially if they're a repeat violator, and all of that is in the existing ordinance. So this isn't, this ordinance isn't changing that. We can still go after them for violating the ordinance.
But if you're innocent, what would happen to the innocent party that did that?
We would go after the violator. And actually, this is one of the main reasons why we added the tree certification, tree company certifications in the ordinance, is because what you're describing happens a lot, where the tree trimming companies actually violate the ordinance, and we, we actually end up going after the tree trimming company. We don't go after the property owner.
Interesting. And who qualifies for the tree grants?
Anybody that has space on their property. That's something that we're going to be establishing, hopefully concurrently with the ordinance, and establishing essentially an in-lu fee that we would then pay for the tree grant program through.
And I remember when I was on the other side here, and there was a property on Driver, and we now have an apartment building, and there's a beautiful black walnut, which was 50 to 100 years of age, and it was cut down. Broke my heart. So what happens if there's undeveloped land, and there's a beautiful black walnut in the middle of the property, and the owner wants, or the owners want to cut it down? What happens?
It's protected just like all the other protected trees now, if, if the ordinance is adopted. So we would treat it just like all the oak trees on the property. We would evaluate the diameter of the walnut, as well as the diameter of all the other protected trees on the property, and they could only remove up to 10% if it's required for their development.
So that development may have been smaller at this point?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I'm done with the questions.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt, do you have any questions of staff?
Thank you, and thank you for the thorough report. Looking at the planning principles chart that you provided to us previously, during your report, you listed some of the additional trees that would be part of the protected species, you know, under the, the new rules. I don't know that all of them that were on this rubric were listed in the presentation. Are all of the ones that are listed in this rubric included in the, in the, you know, revised version?
No, so it's only those three. So we considered those species of trees, but we landed on only adding two additional species, and that would be the black walnut and the California sycamore. And that was based on the different factors that we used to evaluate what trees are going to be worth protecting. There's, I think there was one or two trees that, you know, were already protected, because they are primarily in riparian areas, and those areas are regulated by CDFW. So some things just didn't make sense to, to spend city resources to protect, and so that was our evaluation. If Ryan Allen has any other comments, I'll kick it over to him also.
That's pretty good, Robbie. Yeah, basically, like, looking at what's, what are the most common reoccurring native species and are providing the most value, and like, Robbie mentioned, like, glowos that are native are going to be found in a waterway, and those have, already have existing regulations. There's other native trees, other trees that are native to Agora Hills, but are just extremely uncommon, and so adding them when there's essentially hardly ever going to be instances when they come up didn't seem to make sense. So the California sycamore and the Southern, Southern California black walnut are, you know, trees with canopy size and also, like, much more common for the natural environment.
Okay, great. And since we have an arborist here, can you just educate us on what the lifespan of the California sycamore and the walnut are in comparison to, you know, the oak trees?
Well, we're talking about within a natural area, natural space area. Yeah, typically, I would say walnuts have the poten, excuse me, oak trees have the potential to live generally much longer, I would say, than a sycamore or walnut tree. Giving an exact number is difficult, but, you know, I think sycamores generally, under the best conditions, maybe are looking at like 180 to 100 years. Walnuts would be less than that, and oak trees, you know, can live several hundred Within, you know, this wildland-urban interface area that we have, and in urban environments, it's really unrealistic to expect most trees within the urban area to live to that potential because of all the stressors that they deal with on a day-to-day basis.
But anything we can do to provide them a long and fruitful life is, is a good thing, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Educational. The, the other question I had, Robbie, was with the new, you know, fire regulations and the guidance that's come out, you mentioned that the fire department has a different set of, you know, regulations as far as what they, you know, enforcement, that they can come in and say, you must remove, you know, this particular tree. And I applaud City for looking for ways to, I guess, reduce the pain for homeowners if they are put in that situation. Is, are there, are there any, I guess, appeals process, is there an appeals process at all for if that were to happen to a particular, you know, protected tree? So, you know, if, if there's a, if there's an oak tree that might be close to a particular structure, or if there's, you know, a walnut tree or something like that, then are there, is there any kind of recourse, or is that just out of the purview of the city, because it's falling under the state and the fire codes?
So I would just say that the thing that we don't want to do is essentially put in any sort of threshold or requirement for the city to allow the removal of the protected tree, because then people would use that as an excuse to, to come in and remove it. They'd say, oh, we've, it's a fire hazard, we want to remove it. We're, we're going to try to look for substantial evidence on, on why they really need to remove the tree, whether it be a letter from the insurance company that's saying they're, they're going to be canceling their homeowner's insurance, or whether it be the fire department saying they have to remove it for fire safety purposes. And I think there's an adequate amount of discretion in the hazardous tree permit section where we have that flexibility, but there isn't too much flexibility to where everybody can just claim that it's a fire hazard and remove their trees.
Okay, great, thank you. That's a very thorough answer. With, with regard to some of the discussion that you had with, and I know we don't have a lot of undeveloped property in, in Agora Hills left, but I know that there, there still are some, you know, vacant lots, or, you know, lots that might be redeveloped. With smaller trees or with relocate, with the threshold for relocating trees, so if a developer wanted to come in and maybe there was a small to mid-size protected class of tree, and they wanted to relocate it, the language that you have in here modernizes and streamlines what that procedure would look like and, and where, where those trees would be relocated to, correct?
That's correct. We, we try to avoid relocations where we can. It's not always successful. I'll, I'll let Ryan talk a little bit more.
I'll let Ryan talk a little bit more about that, but we do allow alternative options.
It's certainly feasible in certain circumstances to relocate a tree. They obviously need to be healthy to begin with. And the size is also an important factor. So if we were talking about like a smaller six inch protected tree that was healthy, then it certainly could be a good candidate for relocation. Also depending on too, the terrain, if it's like a steep sloped area, it's not really feasible for a relocation company to get the equipment in properly to dig it up and move it. So it is possible, but there's definitely certain conditions of health and size and other factors that go into making a determination for that.
Great, thank you. And then with regard to adding these new species to the protected tree class, I know that you're going to have plaques or you want to have plaques for the oak trees. Is there some sort of, I guess, designation, and it doesn't have to be a plaque, but, or educational element to, you know, what we, what we provide to the public? Because I know I might not be able to identify a black walnut, a California black walnut in a lineup if compelled to do so, but you know that I'm going to Google it right afterwards, of course.
Yes, we haven't developed a plaque yet, so the sky is our limit. We could do whatever we want.
Maybe even get the arts commission involved?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I think that that is my set of questions for now. I'll couch that with a qualifier.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Reinhardt. Before I begin my questions, do any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Plaizer?
To the arborist, Ryan, where do oak trees stand as a fire hazard?
Oak trees are generally not a fire hazard or, they generally don't prevent an elevated fire risk to a property. Oak trees have very dense, I'm sorry, very thick bark and trunks. So they're very low flammability potential with the trunk. When they have, they also because of the nature of their crown and their leaves, they don't collect a lot of dead leaf litter within the canopy. So when they're, you know, relatively healthy and maintained, they present a much lower risk of ignition than other types of tree species.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I appreciate the fact that the city is always looking at, how do we keep our city beautiful? Oak trees are great. Now we're going to be adding black walnut and sycamores. I would also say that if I put them in a lineup, I'm not 100% sure if I'd be able to pick out every one of them. But maybe you'd be able to know, Ryan, are they in a particular area, the sycamores and black walnuts that they're growing, or are they just dispersed everywhere throughout the city? And then more importantly, you know, I am concerned, you know, about future development. Are we going to be imposing a lot more tree removal or people are going to be requesting it because now we've added two more trees to protective status and it's going to just make our city even that much more challenging to develop future projects?
I can speak on the first part of that if you like. Yeah, so the California sycamore is, you know, a riparian area tree. So it's typically going to be found around like natural waterways. Doesn't mean it couldn't exist elsewhere, but that's naturally where they occur. Walnuts generally, generally intermix with, within an oak-wilden environment. So that's where you would most likely see them in the hills and foothills. They are not nearly as prevalent as the oak trees. Heat and drought has really impacted walnuts, Southern California black walnuts in the area. So there's a lot less of them than there was previously. So oak trees are still going to be by far the main protected tree that's coming up within development projects. So you will see sycamores, obviously, and walnuts as well, but it's going to be, it will be less definitely than the oak trees.
And I assume that we will just be working with future developers to be able to mitigate it, because now we're adding just more protected trees, which I'm in danger of actually.
Yeah, that's correct. Great. Any other questions before I begin mine? Real quick, can you just tell us about the volume of current tree permits that we get and then kind of what the breakdown will be within the new three buckets that will presume if the ordinance gets through?
I'd say roughly 40 to 50 a year. The vast majority are general tree permits and get a handful of development tree permits a year.
I'll jump around actually my questions because I think my next one is more suitable to the first one I just asked. But in terms of certifying tree trimmers and kind of the marketing and the execution of that, like I'm just curious to know like how the city's going to conduct that, if we're going to be spending any money, or is that only going to be like at the counter when someone comes to pull a general tree permit, we're going to inform them of the program? Like how is that mechanism going to work? Because I'm really curious and also curious to know if there could be even like further incentives?
Yeah, so we would use DUEDEC. So DUEDEC would put on either a yearly or bi-yearly training where we would advertise it and invite tree trimmers that have worked with the city in the past to come get certified. And it would be free for them. It'd cost us roughly $600 to $1,000 a year on the city's side to have DUEDEC put on the training. But I think we'd get a good reward out of, out of that money spent.
And like the initial advertisement to tree trimmers is going to be either when the ordinance passes and that first educational seminar gets scheduled, then we'll reach out, or will it be like out the counter? Like how, I'm just kind of curious on that?
Correct. We would probably do a mass email. We'd put it on the city's socials as soon as the ordinance went into effect.
And then kind of antithetical to that, in terms of the certified tree trimmers, I guess as a kind of follow-on to Commissioner Plaizer's question about who bears the responsibility if a tree trimmer comes in and exceeds what's, you know, either been permitted to them, et cetera, does the city maintain kind of the opposite? I don't want to call it a blacklist, but do not work with lists of tree trimmers who have consistently violated our tree term, our tree permits?
No, we don't maintain a blacklist, but we would have a list of certified tree trimming companies. And if they violate, then we would remove them from our certified list. So they're going to want to stay good.
Appreciate that. A follow-on question to Commissioner Stein's question. I'm very curious about the development. I know that the subsections regarding SB nine and affordable housing were removed and then put into their own section within the new proposed ordinance. But could you just educate us commissioners on, you know, because obviously we've seen the regency, I think, you know, we're aware that there are other properties that could be developed kind of in a similar ministerial fashion with the city. Just very curious to know what applicability of the new ordinance would look like on those developers and how we're going to protect what oak trees do exist in those lots, and sorry, new, sorry, oak trees and the potential newcomers to the protected list?
Right. So when we adopted our housing element back in 2022, we adopted new regulations for affordable housing projects and specifically for oak tree permits. And the reason for that is because state law gives great flexibility for developers in terms of waivers and concessions. And so if we have too onerous of standards for those projects, we'll just likely see them unfortunately tossed aside. And so if we have thresholds that are more reasonable to comply with and lower mitigations, then they would essentially be more compelled to comply. So that's why we originally adopted those different regulations for affordable housing projects. And those thresholds have been carried over to the new ordinance. So the ordinance isn't changing that. It's just changing the threshold from remove, from canopy and root zone over to DSH consistent with the, with the proposed regulations. Same thing for Senate Bill nine, except a little bit different. So Senate Bill nine has substantially the same regulations as all of the other development permits in terms of mitigation, except for the fact that we cannot have any discretion when it comes to Senate Bill nine permits. So all of the slightly discretionary processes that are, that you might see within development permits have been eliminated from that SB nine process.
Thank you very much. Two more questions. I might have a follow-up. In terms of the limited space for kind of the various ratios that might come into play if a tree is removed, I was interested to hear that the MRCA is now saying potentially there couldn't, there might not be space in the future. Understanding that the city has partnered with the MRCA on purchasing land in the past, et cetera, we have no ability to say like the areas in which we've partnered with the conservancy to purchase land to protect that land, that we could then have our residents be able to apply these conditions of our oak tree permits in the removal?
No, because as soon as we transfer the property, it's theirs. So we would have to have some sort of easement specifying that we can use it for such purposes. Otherwise, the developer would have to actually have a separate agreement with MRCA to plant and maintain the trees. But recently, developers have been going to MRCA and potentially getting denied or the cost is prohibitive. And so, and we've also been notified as staff that they might not be accepting any more, any more tree plantings as well.
And are we afraid, like kind of process-wise, that we might hit a threshold point of time in which we don't have enough residents who have said, hey, I've got enough property for the grant program, et cetera, and then we have a queue of trees that need to be mitigated for and there's nowhere for them to go?
Yes. So, so we've looked at all of that. We have several opportunities on city-owned property right now. And we're obviously looking for anybody who has available land to accept those trees. But we're also working with nonprofit agencies to try to establish agreements for potential off-site plantings near the city. This question actually came up during the city council meeting when we were discussing the planning principles. And while we want to ensure that as many trees as possible happen within city limits, we're also okay if, as a last resort, we might have to get into an agreement with a nonprofit to plant those trees somewhere near the city.
Okay, so there's a way to mitigate a backlog?
Yeah.
Is inadvertently created?
Yeah.
Great. Oh, last question I've got is, is there any consideration for retroactivity? I.e. if you planted a tree sometime this year and all of these ordinances and incentives and everything come online, presuming everything moves tonight to city council, are we looking at considering some sort of retroactivity? And the reason why I ask this is because I redid my backyard and I took out all the grass, planted all natives and everything, and then realized after the fact that I could have gotten an incentive through Los Verdes, municipal water district and did not have any ability to do a retroactive. So I'm just curious to know if we can try to foolproof for someone like me?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing built into the ordinance and we, I don't know if we would even be allowed to really build, because, because really I think what you're talking about is the tree grant program. I don't think we would be able to retroactively essentially pay you for the trees that you already put in there, because the, the fee for the in, the in lieu fee that we're taking is going to be established based on how much money we have to pay a tree company to go in and plant the tree on the property. So I would say probably not, we can't.
Yeah, so essentially, in essence, because the program doesn't exist today, there's no funds to go backward in time?
Right.
Okay, great. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Sharon?
All right. So I didn't hear any of the other commissioners question any of the fees. So I'm not going to make any sort of motion or anything like that, but I do want, like, I would love my consideration to be just, if this does move to the, the city council, that my, you know, my recommend, not recommendation, I guess, like my concerns be heard. And so I just think that if, you know, citizens are taking the time to pull permits and, you know, take photos and go through the right channels, we should not also just burden them with additional fees. So that, my two cents, but I won't make that a requirement on the, on the ordinance.
Staff will definitely relay that. And just so that, just for everybody's benefit as well, the city council did actually reduce the tree permit fee for minor modifications. So that $250 amount is a actual reduction. If we covered staff's actual expense as well as the arborist's actual expense, it would probably be more in the range of $500 to $600 for, for a general tree permit. And as you can imagine, if we're issuing 50 permits a year and we're not recouping our costs, that can be a substantial financial burden. So that's just something where when we adopt the fee resolution, the city council has, has budgetary considerations where we would have to ensure that our budget is still balanced when, when we make, make that decision.
Can I, just to follow up on that, how, so you guys are doing about 50 permits a year. How many violators or how much restitution, like fees are you, are also producing a year? Do they, could they cancel them out and could you add 250 to those, those fees or those fines?
We, no. So we can, we can only charge what it costs to issue the permit. And sort of similarly with code enforcement, we can, we can only essentially, and there is a difference between fees and fines. But there's kind of a fine line where we, and first of all, we don't know exactly how many fines we're going to issue in a given year. Hopefully it's none. Hopefully nobody violates. So I don't think we can rely, rely really on that for, to cover those costs.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Reinhardt has a follow-up.
Thank you. With that, I mean, I can understand that there's a fiscal impact if we were to, like, you know, eliminate the application or the permit fee for, you know, taking care of, you know, protected tree trimming. With that said, are there, I guess, any backstops or protections if, for example, someone was on, you know, a fixed income or if there were any kind of low income, you know, considerations? So again, if someone, you know, if there's, if there's a need to, you know, take care of a tree because maybe it's encroaching on, you know, you know, their neighbor's property or, you know, they're making sure that, again, we're rewarding the right behavior, but if there are, if there are any other considerations from the city based on, you know, economic need?
Yeah. Hardship waivers do exist and that's, that's a process that can happen for almost any city permit is they can submit a hardship, hardship waiver. Obviously, they would have to submit some supporting documentation, but yes, hardship waivers exist.
Great, thank you.
This is Chair Roth. I actually have a follow-on to Commissioner Sharon's question about the appeal clause there. My concern is taking it a step forward. If, well, actually, no, let me ask this first. We, on average, process about 50 a year permits. How many do we deny a year?
Close to zero, because usually if somebody submits a permit and we review it and we tell them, you know, this, this isn't going to work, then we give them the option to just withdraw and get some of their money back. So.
Or revise, correct?
Or revise, either one. So I would say zero.
So it's like an appeal light kind of process that we have?
Yeah.
Right. So if this were to proceed, someone gets completely denied by the city, and this is actually more of a question for the city attorney, is there any concern that a future lawsuit that could escalate beyond us and the city council over our oak tree ordinance? Could it potentially harm other aspects of the applicability of the ordinance? I.e. like, could this ordinance get thrown out of court if someone wins against the city saying, you've not allowed me to appeal? city, saying, you've not allowed me to appeal, the ordinance is unconstitutional, et cetera, et cetera, and therefore, other aspects of the ordinance are potentially at risk of being thrown out? If that doesn't make sense, I'm happy to re-clarify the question.
Yes. No, it does make sense. I'm just looking to see, I'm assuming we have a severability clause, and I think we do, I'm just checking to confirm. Yeah. So we have what's called a severability clause in the ordinance, which essentially says if any particular subsection of the ordinance is deemed to be unconstitutional or invalid, the remainder of the ordinance, the council intended to adopt the remainder of the ordinance regardless. So normally, what happens in that instance is only a particularly small provision, the provision that was challenged, will be deemed invalid, and the remainder of the ordinance will stand, which is why we include the severability clause. Does that answer the question?
100%. Let's bookmark that for deliberations. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff before we proceed? Great. I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Do we have any public comments for tonight?
Yes, we did receive two written public comments that were distributed to the planning commission and will be part of the record. One from Serena Nuzzi, Oldagora, and the other from George Coleman, Oldagora. And we do have a speaker this evening, Patricia Schultz.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners. I am Patricia Schultz, and I'm representing my neighborhood and our association, Hill Rise Open Space Association. I will just start by saying, over five years ago, our homeowners station, association had requested that the oak tree ordinance be reviewed and hopefully revised to be fair and less costly for existing residential property. We understand other issues took priority over the last five years, but it's very good now to see that this proposed revision with a lot of recommendations that will reduce costs for homeowners. So thank you, we appreciate that. In particular, I noticed the proposal to make the permit process less onerous and less And it would be very welcome if there were no permit fees, or at least as minimal as possible. All homeowners would appreciate that in our association. But my main concern was, what I did not see in the draft was any reference to fire agencies, really all the fire agencies, recommendations to help reduce risks from fire, from wildfires. Mr. Stein kind of touched on it a little bit, but, for instance, keeping a minimum of five feet between tree branches and structures, and also trimming lower branches of trees to help prevent what they call fire ladders. So I was wondering, if possible, some accommodation could be made in the proposal for these recommendations, because we kind of feel it would be, it's unfair to homeowners and homeowner associations, for that matter, to have to pay for fees to adhere to safety recommendations by the fire agencies. We're, we're very well aware that oak trees are the best trees to have, and of course, they hold the embers and they're great, but a lot of homeowners really don't want them touching their homes. And if the homeowners wanted to follow those recommendations and have at least five feet separation between tree branches, it could easily, so those tree branches could easily be more than three-inch diameter, the, that's now what I read in the draft, would be the threshold for routine maintenance. So that, that's my concern and question, if perhaps somehow, something could be incorporated to accommodate homeowners and homeowner associations when they want to follow the recommendations by the fire agencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk, do we have any other public comments?
We have no further speakers.
Great. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing, and we may now move to deliberations. Yeah, we can discuss that during deliberations. Would you like to start then?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sharon?
I guess so. I guess, but if the public hearing is closed, can I ask questions?
I defer to our city attorney, but we can ask clarifying questions during our deliberations, correct?
Yeah, you can ask clarifying questions of staff, if that's it. And you can reopen it if you want to, but...
Okay. If I, if I'm good, I'll, I'll go. So I actually brought up a good point. Is there any sort of process, so if, I know I get like, I'm an Oldagora resident, and I get a letter from the fire department saying I'm in compliance with brush clearance every year, is there, and I keep that for record and stuff, is there, is there any sort of, if they, if a resident got a letter from the fire department recommending, I, you know, we need you to move, like, remove five feet of branches or lower hanging branches, whatever the, the letter says, is there any way to, you know, like, not even fast-track it, but say, like, like, avoid the, the process, the, the ordinance in general, because the fire department has their own set of standards and, and guides, and can the resident, like, adhere to their standards? Like, how would that work? I'm, I'm so curious now.
Yeah. It depends on whether there's an official order from them, but I would say, generally speaking, if the fire department is asking you to do something, we would classify that as hazardous, and hazardous permits don't actually require a fee. Hazardous tree permits are free. So, so we wouldn't be requiring a fee for, for those sort of removals.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Would you, would you like to deliberate further?
I just realized, I am also deliberating. I really appreciate the time it took, it took to do this. I think that, I think that spending your guys' valuable time in figuring out a way to lower the cost burden on residents, and also streamline, like, the, the process, so it's not so, like, just onerous to, to prune your trees, is really important for a city that really values the trees. I can make all the findings. I, I do, would like my concerns about cost to be relayed. You know, tree trimming alone is thousands of dollars, and so to add even more fees on top of that, just for doing the right thing, I think is pretty, hmm, it, it, to me, it doesn't sit well. But, but I understand them, and so I can make all the findings.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Stein?
First of all, you know, I do appreciate the staff and city council looking at how we can, you know, address, you know, maintenance of protected trees, adding a few more trees, because I think it's going to just make our city that much more habitable. I was actually reading our resolution to the city council, and there's all these whereas, but some of them, you know, speak to me, you know, where, you know, these extra trees, by protecting them, it's going to help the environment. You know, some of the things, the thing, saving water by slowing water evaporation from other thirsty landscaping, pervading shade, I kind of like that. Supporting biodiversity and habitat for wildlife, I kind of like that. So I really want to commend, you know, staff and the city for looking at ways of, you know, making our environment that much more better, putting together, you know, streamline. I do hear, you know, the fact that, you know, yes, you know, the fire departments now are, you know, are going to come in and say, you've got to do things, but in the scheme of things, you know, I can make all the findings.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Platzer?
I echo Commissioner Stein's comments. I, I think this is long overdue, and I'm very happy that other trees are added, like the black walnut and California sycamore, and I'm also happy that saplings under six inches are not under protection, because these trees throw little saplings all over the place, and it's very onerous on, on the owner to figure out if they're in violation. And I, with the fire, question of fire issues, I'm wondering if we can somehow get to the public whether they're eligible for tree grants. And I, I feel this, I can make all the findings for this, but as far as tree grants, we should let the public know if they're eligible for that.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Thank you, Chair Roth. Again, echoing my fellow commissioners' sentiments, the reporting and, you know, educational elements that you brought forth in, in your presentation, we're illuminating and go beyond just what we read when we, you know, receive our, our packets. So thank you for answering all the questions and, and for educating us on, on the finer points of, you know, the, the different species of trees from the arborist. Thank you. I think that, you know, the homeowners association brings up a lot of, you know, valid points with regard to, again, kind of trying to make sure that we reward good behavior, and, you know, Commissioner Sharon brought up, you know, similar concerns, and I, you know, asked about the, you know, different ways we could help out if, if someone, you know, was suffering from undue burden, you know, to not only take care of their property and maintain it properly, but also do it within the confines of, you know, protecting our trees. So I think that you've addressed all of those issues. I mean, we're, there's not a perfect solution, but I think that if there were, you know, again, really dire concerns economically for someone, that there would be some resources available, and that if there was something that was, that, you know, was determined to be hazardous, the way that it's, you know, the language is couched here, I think, you know, from a legislative standpoint, makes sense, but I would recommend that if we, you know, find new, new and better ways to educate the public, make sure that they are available, you know, that they know that there are tree grants available, just like, you know, we want to make sure that the programs for zero-scape lawns, you know, removal are available to our, our fellow residents, so that they don't pay too much money for their redoing their backyard. So with that, I, I can make the findings.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll start by saying I can also make all the findings. Really appreciate staff, Ryan, for you coming out and, and, again, being available to us. I, I would echo a similar sentiment. I'm, I'm very eager in, as this continues to move towards city council, wanting to hear about, or, or at least set the, the table for them to, to discuss kind of the affordability of the fees, and then in particularly, in particular, how they intersect with regulations from the fire department, and what that would look like. But I do think, based off of everything that I've heard, you know, I'm comfortable with the staff's recommendation. I think that it achieves what has been set forth by city council with the different planning, you know, buckets and, and everything that was put together, I think meets or exceeds what the city council had tasked staff to do. So with that, like I said, I can make the findings. So hearing, I think that we've all in alignment again. I will read the staff recommendation, and then I ask for the maker of a motion in the second. So tonight's, tonight's resolution is to adopt a resolution recommending, recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Agora Hills Municipal Code to consolidate all protected tree regulations into Section 9657, and update the city's protected tree regulations to streamline permitting, the permit process, prioritize the retention of individual trees, incentivize the planting of new protected trees, and to include the California sycamore and the Southern California black walnut, and making a determination of exemption under SEQA. So I will now call for a motion in the second to approve the staff recommendation.
Vice Chair Reinhardt makes a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharon, seconds?
Thank you very much. And I'll now defer to our city clerk for a roll call of it.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, five to zero.
Great. Thank you very much. So that concludes our two items for the evening. So I will now defer to our staff if there are any comments for tonight. Great. Seeing none, hearing none. Are there any comments from our planning commission? All right. I just want to welcome our former mayor, Mayor Ad Corodori. I was hoping you were going to give us a public comment, and I was going to give you a shout-out then, but thank you for being with us tonight. So with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting tonight, the regular planning commission meeting scheduled...
Let me cut in here real fast. I just wanted to remind the public that our next planning commission meeting on November 6th is canceled. So then the following planning commission meeting at November 20th will be the next.
And you have an opportunity to plug what's happening that night. Would that, would that be the state of the city?
Yes. It is the state of the city on November 6th.
And as a reminder for the public, that will be held up the street at the Civic Center, right? The community center? Thank you very much. So with that, I believe then our next regular scheduled meeting will be, what is that, November 20th, 2025? And, oh, sorry, that's included here, and it will be at 6:00 PM here on Thursday, November 20th, in the city council chambers of the Civic Center, located at 30, 30,001 Ladyface Court, Agora Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.